All right. Co-callers meeting to order at six oh one Tuesday, August twenty seventh. Um, welcome to the special meeting of the planning commission. We'll go ahead and start roll talks and sure free talk and stuff starts off, please.
Wait, bring over here.
Christine Green here.
Kevin Cliving here. Peter Repulse is here. Steve Laurie here. Cherie Goffe.
And Samuel is here. Um, it's a motion to approve of the agenda.
So. Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right, is there a motion to approve the minutes from our August thirteenth meeting?
So.
All right, I mean, we need to vote, but is there any changes, any additions? Or otherwise we can approve by consented? Good? Okay. All right, so we don't really have any special land use or anything, or no conflict with this tonight and today. We have a public hearings. Are there any citizens here wishing to address the commission on agenda items?
Students speak.
If you have comments, please come to the podiums, state your name and address. And then you're wishes to address.
You said name, address?
Yeah, that's it. All right.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Kelly. I live at four thirty East Arch. And I have lived there for forty seven years. Long time. Um, just a comment about Arch and Ridge Streets. Um, you probably all know this, but I'm just going to say it anyway. It is a national historic district. It was so designated in the late eighties. I worked on it with many other residences. And it is a source of national historic pride in the United States as designated and also locally. It's kind of like an open air museum. People, tourists, residents driving up and down the streets, looking at the homes, studying the architecture, um, learning a little bit of our beautiful history as they drive along. So, um, the reason I mention that is because two times, well, more than two, but two I'll mention, we had, um, faced, uh, construction or changes in the area, including a six floor unit behind Pine Ridge apartment, a parking structure, and tearing down the old, um, what's now the museum, the Maritime Museum. That's a sandstone building down on the waterfront. Um, was going to be torn down to put in a great big huge water tank. The, the reason neither one happened was because there were built in regulations regarding a national historic district that precluded certain amount of monies, especially like HUD monies, going for any projects that were deemed incompatible or destructive of natural historic resources. So both of those things never went through. And it was those, um, um, valuable, um, legislation or whatever you want to call it zoning or whatever of the national trust that precluded having those things happen. So I've been trying to understand zoning. I, my hat's off to all of you. I find it is very complicated. And occasionally I have been at these meetings and I try to understand it. But I know it's a tough subject to tackle. So I just wanted to say I appreciate what you do. So what I wanted to say, I understand that zoning is a process for changing a property zoning to allow for different activities or development. And if I'm, you can tell me later if I'm wrong. For example, a property that was previously only allowed to be a residential house could instead be rezoned to have stores and offices built there. Residential property is the type of real estate specifically designed and constructed for the purpose for people to reside, intended for personal use by the residents, and are not intended for any commercial or industrial activities. They're typically single family homes, apartments, townhouses, offering a range of amenities and features to ensure a comfortable and safe living environment. Commercial property is defined as any property which is used for business purposes. Primary purpose of purchasing a commercial, commercial property is to generate a profit, either through rental income or capital gains. This category includes hotels, businesses, retail stores, offices, industries, public facilities, and more. Do I have a time limit?
Pretty much, but it's possible.
I work as best as I can. I know City Commission, I try to go really fast. Conventional zoning laws outline the permitted uses, restrictions and development standards, including density and building heights, parking requirements of designated areas, which might range from residential to commercial to industrial to recreational to scenic. Our new master plan can legally protect our historic and natural resources, including Arch and Ridge Streets, National Historic District, and our Lake Shore Boulevard designated scenic drive, our beachfront view and the access, and the many assets which make Marquette so magical. Constant growth can bring increased noise, traffic, and construction inconveniences. Overdevelopment can start detracting from what people love about Marquette in the first place. Making any rezoning decision one which should be considered by the residents to be in the best interests of the whole city. Questions? I am really found out about this recently. But a lot of questions have been raised by people to whom I have been speaking. So I guess I would like to know at some point, what is the purpose of this proposed rezoning? And why would it be in the best interests of our community? In other words, why is it being changed? It must be a benefit or you wouldn't be changing it. Um, I did go to many of those really master plan meetings. And one of the clear things that came out of those meetings to me and everybody that was there was how important neighborhoods are. Um, so would this have a welcome or a beneficial effect on our neighborhoods? Are we endorsing a future where we consider the land under a home to be prime real estate property? It appears to me that the goals of neighborhood zoning and commercial zoning are diametrically opposed and incompatible. One is to generate a profit on investment. And in the neighborhood zoning, property is designed for the purpose of providing residences for people to reside and for their personal use and safety and sense of neighborhood place.
Thank you. Are there other members of the public who wish to address the commission?
Mike Conley, five hundred East Ridge Street. I will repeat my comments from two weeks ago. They were well documented. And thank you for putting them in there. I would like to speak though on a couple of other points. Uh, last meeting, you were told that there was a sort of a timeline on this that has to be done by the end of October. It really doesn't. The only reason that was given was it wanted staff one and a half to pass by the current commission. There's no reason for that. Commission is not going to recess. They'll be here after the election. So let's do it right and not do it just fast. Second, you were told that we're out of money. That we can't amend the plan because we can't afford it. Well, it's better to do it right than to save the money. And I think that get ready or made in the state by combined downtown and east side. Make them redo it. Make them reflect the will of the community. Uh, and have them do it at no additional cost. Uh, that's what we would do with anything, any consultant that we hired in our own lines. Say, no, it's not right. Do it right and then, and then bring it back. So the, the reasons for moving ahead without further changes and leaving the downtown and east side combined are, they're not valid. You don't have to rush it through. You can do it in proper time and do it in, uh, in the public. If you make changes to the language that's in the master plan, publish it and let the comment, let the public then look at it, reflect on it, and come back to you and give their comments to that. Currently, the only plan that the, the, the only draft plan that the public has is the May first version. There are no changes since then. So I think that this has to be a transparent public process and we can't shortcut that. And let's not let money get in the way of a good decision. My final point is if we're going to develop the east side like we're going to develop the downtown, the target here is Lake Shore Boulevard. Uh, nobody's going to put a hotel near Magnette and Spruce Street. That's not going to happen. We're talking about Lake Shore Boulevard. Well, if we're talking about that, let's just keep going south along Lake Street. Take that all the way up behind. So Lake Shore, um, is walkable. It already has commercial development on the north side. It has easy access to forty one. Let's just extend this, extend this, a downtown east side district. And Lake Street is on east side. Just by the same line of thinking, put that, open that up for commercial development as well. Uh, does that sound like a good idea? I don't think so. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else for comment on agenda items?
Barbie Promfall for East Magnetic Street. I'm sorry I haven't been able to keep up with all the meetings this summer, but it's been kind of busy. First of all, directed to the comment made by that gentleman there, uh, this planning commission once had a five and a half hour meeting on whether a hotel should be put near the intersection of Magnette and Spruce. The floors were covered with people. Uh, and it didn't pass the special land use code because the planning commission did a fine job of evaluating. So I, I don't ever put anything past what could come up before the planning commission. Number two, um, I walked out with my dog the other day at five fifteen in the morning and my dog wakes me up and then decides where we're going to go. So she was in the middle of the sidewalk deciding that, whatever. And it's five fifteen in the morning, I don't care. And an e-bike comes barreling down the sidewalk going about forty five miles an hour. And I can't move that fast, neither can my dog. So I'm like, and at the last minute, the e-bike goes out into the street, five fifteen in the morning, and then cuts back up on the next sidewalk to run, run onto the sidewalks. And this reminded me that our biggest risk right now is when we encourage people to come here, which we are, because we don't want to die as a community, we want increase. We have not taken into account the fact that the streets that we live on are not designed for the vehicles we now have. My biggest fear is that someone, somebody will convince you to connect the end of Magnetic Street with Lake Shore Boulevard. Because I, I wasn't kidding when I said that vehicle's going forty five miles an hour at five fifteen in the morning. I have a Ring camera on my front door and there's a steady stream of bikes, e-bikes, people walking, people going back and forth. It's a pedestrian walkway down to the water. But if you open it up, if you connect Lake Shore Boulevard to Magnetic Street, which I, I'm trying to read this. I think it's one of the suggestions is to not have dead ends. It really needs to be a dead end. Because if it's not a dead end, those cars and vehicles will come barreling up the street even faster into basic residential neighborhoods that aren't big enough. Come the summertime, we have vehicles on both sides of Magnetic Street, there isn't room for a vehicle to go past there. I mean, I circle the block a couple of times. And my biggest fear is that in our enthusiasm to connect everything and make these arteries of transportation, which I believe our planning commission knows more about than I do, you forget that there's sometimes a really good reason not to make it easy for people to get from place to place that fast. And I, I speak to Fair Avenue, which they put, you know, uh, speed limit signs on constantly. And you're always, your speed limit's being judged, but from Lake Shore all the way up to Fort. It's, I see cars go sixty five miles an hour on there, even though it's supposed to be twenty five. So I'm begging you, as you present this to the city commission, you put a caveat in there that no, uh, broken road is to be connected without the consent of the people on that road. Because there may be some places where people really want that. But if Magnetic Street is connected, I'm going to have to put up a four foot fence in my front yard and keep the dog constantly in wait because we came this close, it's five fifteen in the morning. And the dirty look I got from the kid, excuse me, the young person riding the bike was like, what are you doing on the sidewalk? And I'm like, what are you doing on the sidewalk? And the second thing, I heard, I went to the master plan meetings, they were well done and I appreciate how well the city worked at getting those master things out. And I read the books and I actually took some of them home and read about how we're trying to turn people away from vehicles into bicycles and make this a pedestrian bicycle town. And I have to tell you that I am at an age now where I want a parking spot as close to the place I'm going as possible. And if I have to pay for parking, I'll walk and walk, but do not pay for parking. If you take away, like I believe a cut economy, excuse me, Tibetis was going to be the place where you're going to have four different businesses and cut the parking by one quarter. That's the one place I can go and know I'm going to have a free parking spot. I would encourage you to leave an option open for those parts of Marquette that are historically not designed to have bicycles be the primary transportation. When I was a young person last century, nobody rode their bike in the city of Marquette, there were too many hills. And now there's a, there's a planning, I saw the page that said, we're going to do everything we can to get where the parking spots can encourage people to walk and bike. And it just doesn't match with, um, the common sense. Plus you risk, excuse me, an ADA objection to your plan. Because if you don't have parking spots, people who need to drive places can't park in there. Therefore, it's a, you have to have a reasonable accommodation of people with disabilities. So again, to sum up, you did a very, very thorough job of trying to move us into the next stage. I beg of you to slow down the connection of interconnecting streets, to remind people that people like parking spots. And to remind people as well that it's not always good to make it easy to get people from point A to point B. But sometimes slowing them down with natural barriers is better for everybody involved. And I thank you and my dog thanks you for listening to us because I can't make that story up. And I thought I would bring it and share it with you because there was no reason for that vehicle to beep on the sidewalk at quarter after five in the morning. Whereas I, my dog had a reason. Okay, thank you very much.
All right, any other comment?
Hello, my name is Jim Kelly. I live at three forty East Bridge Street. And I am here to talk about the expansion of the zoning district, including the east side and all downtown. Off the bat, I'm going to tell you, I just learned about this yesterday, so I'm not exactly real well versed on exactly all the details. But I've been a builder and a contractor in Marquette for thirty years. And I've worked on the north side, the east side, the west side, downtown. I've worked all over and I followed the rules all along. And they all have specific rules for a good reason. They're different areas. They're all beautifully different. And they should come under a different set of rules as you go along. And so I guess tonight I ask that you just kind of explain to me as you go along, what's the motivation for including the east side of downtown? They're, they're different areas. My business is downtown. My residence is on the east side. There's no reason that the rules for those two areas should be the same. They're completely different. And that's the way Marquette has always been. And I don't see what the fourth side is for changing that. So I hope you can help that for me. Thank you.
Any other comment? All right, seeing none. Um, we have no old business, no new business. Are there any citizens wishing to address the commission on non-agenda items? Okay, seeing none. Uh, we have no correspondence, minutes, or other reports, no training. So we'll go to the heart of matter, which is our work session tonight on the draft community master. Um, to just refresh our collective memory and those who weren't at our last meeting, we went through the public comment that was received in the public comment period from May to June. Um, and we wrestled with how to address all the comments we received. And then commissioners sent, uh, comments of our own about the draft. But we also had a May one draft that we were working on of. And so we have compiled a, what is it? Now a nine page document of, of comments, many of which were things that arose just tonight. Um, and so tonight, the plan was tonight to kind of go through, this is kind of our last, um, shot as a planning commission to say, you know, what we collectively as the governing body that is by statute, by state statute, the Michigan Planning Enabling Act of two thousand eight says that, quote, "The planning commission shall make and approve a master plan as a guide for development within the planning jurisdiction." So, you know, the city hires consultants, but we are the members, volunteer members of the community who are ultimately responsible for making the plan. So just kind of to echo some of the comments we heard tonight. Um, we do, I think, share a commitment to making this the best plan that we can make it. Sure, it's not going to be perfect because everything can always use improvement. But we are committed, I think, to trying to do the best to reflect our community's values and, um, give this information to the consultants that they can incorporate kind of one more final round of revisions. So that's what tonight is. It might be a long one, so I hope you brought your coffee or whatever you need to keep awake. As, um, we really do hope to kind of finalize some of the comments tonight and make sure that we have one last round of revision that we can send out to the planning consultants that can get incorporated into the draft. So, um, that's kind of an overview of, of the process, I guess. Um, I, you know, to echo what Mr. Conley and others kind of talking about the transparent public process, I think as members of this community, we are also very, you know, committed to that and really trying to be open and in, in really address all the comments that we have received through the public. And also being involved in this process for now, it's going to take two years coming, um, making sure that, you know, the things that we've seen from the bird gut level are being incorporated into this plan. So that it is a uniquely Marquette plan. Um, staff, do you guys want to say anything?
Yeah, I'd like to, um, address some of the misinformation or misconceptions about what's happening here uh, related to planning and zoning. Um, this is not a zoning hearing. There has been no proposal to change the zoning of the, of residential portions of uh, east Marquette to be equivalent to that of the central business district. That's not at all what, um, was, was proposed, is proposed in this plan. The, uh, the, the plan, as we'll get into the details here, has one of the key elements of the community master plan related to zoning is what's called a future land use map. We have had one in our master plan for many years, for decades. It is a requirement, um, in our land development code that the, that the future land use map is evaluated for compatibility with any proposed zoning changes. So the way the planning commissions operated for years, decades, is that if a proposed zoning change comes to them through either an application from a private citizen, a business, or, uh, the city itself, that the change is evaluated in relation to what the future land use map proposes. So the master plan has a very valuable relationship to zoning in that way. And you can't have a zoning ordinance without a zoning plan, the future land use plan, the heart of that plan. So what this new community master plan is proposing is that the future land use plan is, is quite a bit different than what we have now, which is very parcel specific. The, um, so each parcel in the city at present has a future land use designation. What has been proposed by our consultants is that we have a more or less neighborhood based future land use plan that calls out general characteristics of neighborhoods and assembles these like characteristics or areas with similar geography and characteristics into neighborhoods. Those don't automatically translate to any kind of zoning changes. Zoning changes are made through changing the law, which is a, a very intensive process. That requires at least two public hearings and proposed zoning changes like changing the east side to commercial with, um, of course, that, that's not being discussed, is not going to be discussed. It's, it's, um, what's discussed in here is that these neighborhoods have certain characteristics. And this particular area is being categorized together in this plan because it was the historic core of the city. Um, and Dennis will talk more about what we're proposing to do with it. I just want to clear up the fact that zoning changes are not on the table at all. Um, and to Ms. Kelly's comments about the historic district, the current master plan has a, a chapter that was new to that plan when we, uh, offered it in twenty fifteen and was adopted in twenty fifteen. That has a very, um, good historical heritage, community heritage chapter that documents the Arch and Ridge Street Historical District, as well as several other historical sites in city Marquette. That's not replicated in the new plan. One of the, one of the reasons is this new plan was proposed to be a lot more easy to navigate. People today don't really want to necessarily delve through a lot of historical data and information and other like kind of information. They want things to be pithy and easy to navigate on a mobile device. Um, that's the reality. So this plan is more or less divided into two sections with one being a very kind of magazine like uh, the, the section I was scrolling through here with these neighborhood place types. That's our future land use map, um, explanation of these neighborhood type areas. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dennis to continue this conversation of this part of the review.
Well, this is a really, really good job, Dave, and I, I appreciate your clarifying that fact. This is not a zoning change. Extremely unlikely that would ever become a zoning change because as we discussed at the last meeting, these are typologies based upon neighborhoods. And then underneath those, you have all the individual zoning districts for the city that the planning commission works on when you do your zoning plan and your land development code to make sure things that are compatible. It would be really, really probably illegal, um, if somebody were going to propose a hotel in the middle of East Ridge Street and the planning commission approved it based upon a land use typology. That's, that's not a realistic thing that could occur. Although I do appreciate and understand the comments and concerns from the neighborhood. And I mean, people will have property, everybody in the city of Marquette has property that they have invested time, money. You like a neighborhood because you live in that neighborhood and so on and so forth. So no disrespect intended. Clearly, we understand that. Um, but we're trying to find a way to communicate to folks that um, this is not zoning, it's not going to be, you know, something that's going to turn into the case of civilization in these neighborhoods. Um, although I do understand that could potentially be seen as a threat. We did, um, Dave and I did make some changes to this that we're prepared to present to the planning commission tonight that further, um, that they, they encapsulate the intent of the historic core of what, what the entire plan is formed on these neighborhoods. So it still encapsulates that intent. But there's a few little minor changes there that at least in, in our thoughts clarified um, the differences within that district between commercial areas and residential areas. Uh, that, that would help the planning commission. Well, as far as the rest of the comments that you had, thank you, by the way, Matt and Sheriff for putting that together. It was very helpful. Um, for those in the audience, Dave and I also looked at those from a staff level and, um, kind of put a few comments together on those to help the planning commission with your discussion, whether, I mean, if it was something easy that is an edit, a typo or something like that, that staff can handle, we wrote it as a staff comment. And then there are a couple of issues that I believe the, the planning commission still needs to discuss. We kind of put those down as a discussion. Dave and I are here for questions, um, and we thank you for, uh, the opportunity to be able to help you with this. I did also go back and if you can recall, we had the summary of the, um, community engagement report. Cause I, I think we had, I know I had mentioned it to the planning commission last time, that it's really last time, that it's really important being the caretakers of this plan to go back and ensure that, you know, the, the over 4,000 people that did the survey and participated and everything else, that you're encapsulating what they said they wanted. So I went and did a, a safety valve check for you on that as well. I'm sure you may have, but if not, I'm available for questions on that also. So, thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Appreciate that. Yes, just to clarify, for folks who I know complaining zoning is kind of confusing and kind of seems like it all makes sense, but the Community Master Plan is like community vision, right? It's like, where do we want to be, where do we want to go? It is what informs the zoning, but the zoning is, as Dave and Dennis have said, a totally sort of separate process that's informed by the plan. Your zoning changes have to be consistent with the vision of the community, but it is not changing the zoning of any parcel of property. So those are kind of two separate things, just to clarify if some people don't think this is an immediate zoning implications. So this will be clarified. When, when, uh, Community Master Plan is different from the zoning. Uh, hopefully that's clear. So should we proceed just by kind of going through this because I think that, like, just how those quack or something chimes in? And I think a lot of what we heard today will actually be touched upon by things that have been raised by members of the planning commission as well. So, um, can walk through this. Steve Laurie, Commissioner Laurie, had a lot of really great comments, but I think because we were one of the earliest to comment, that actually a lot of these were incorporated into the main draft because your comments have been really interesting. So we want to, I think we all want to be on the same page here. The first two from Steve have been addressed. Those were mostly just historical accuracy, geographic accuracy, maybe. Job creation, page nine. I see a check twice down. Is that something?
Yeah, I didn't clarify that.
Yeah, I was curious what you were going to say.
Check is like, yeah, we can handle that.
We can do that, yes.
Yeah, that makes sense. I, I didn't figure the planning commission would want to deliberate for a long time over something that should be added in that.
Okay, so then check, just to clarify those staff annotations, yes, we can do this. That one's invited to be fixed. Okay, um, page thirteen, the future menus, does the underlying city base map reflect the land condo approved last year at the end of the Morrisville Trail? What the basements says without approval? It's like we do have some discussion of all that. Staff, did you want to clarify? Staff, what do you want?
Oh, I can do that really quickly, actually. So the, so what happened is the, the tax revenue per acre map was inconsistent with the rest of the maps, it's different. So we just need to change that map. The, uh, the, somehow the lot split showed up on that one, but they haven't been broken out yet, there hasn't been, uh, any assignments made and it still has, project still has unfinished elements and hasn't even received zoning approval yet. So somehow, I don't know what layer they got on the tax revenue map, but we can change that map and it'll address all of that.
Commissioner Laurie, is that, that something you can?
Well, I, I just used that land condo as kind of an example of, to ask the question, are we using the latest map that we have, the latest base map that we have, or the maps that do appear in there? Because there's been instances in the past where, um, the maps have not all been updated when a change occurs, it gets updated on, on one of the city's base maps, but not necessarily all of them. So it was just a question to verify that that's the case here, that these are the latest base maps.
Okay, is that something, I mean, to me, that seems like something that we should just assume that the consultants will be willing to make sure their maps are accurate?
No, we, actually, we, we made that map, there were some last minute changes on that one and we made it and we actually grabbed a draft version that is kind of being leaving with those parcels broken out on it. So that one was actually on us.
Okay. But throughout, was that something that maybe?
Oh, yeah.
Make sure the consultants are. Okay, um, I see a little check, so is this something we need to discuss somewhere? Page fourteen? Page fourteen? We go from that one? That's, that one?
I did note that you raised somewhat the same question that, you know, kind of, why did the recreation corridor stop at the lighthouse and continually further solve? That's kind of embodied in this, this comment here and a few years later on in the chart. And I, I know we're getting stabbed here, this will be on, on what the basis can be of faith here, especially with the, uh, the Madison Park Development, I think it's just a little according to here.
I, you know, I think in our discussions, when, when, when the consultant would speak to me about recreation corridor, I'm often talking about the one that we had, did we able to, about working, you know, rail corridor? And probably something I'm lost in the conversation here, but I, I don't disagree with your comment, that's fine, we can mention recreation corridors and all the way south. That would require changing the other districts, you know, and typologies.
Well, at this point, yeah, it's, it's kind of late at this point to extend in all that way, um, especially for the sub-situations where everybody, you know, maybe it would even be more accurate to extend it to Washington Street. Can that, might not require a lot of cheese? I don't know. I mean, I can live with it the way it is, it's just been, my interpretation didn't match it.
I agree. Commissioner Laurie, do you have something to add?
I understand you're talking there that, for instance, Lake Street would have, I wouldn't say bisected, but it would just have a thin grid line running along the multi-use path or a thin grid line running right out through where the, the, uh, two point hospital ones is that maybe it's just having a draw that little grid minor, at least maybe verbally mentioned that this could continue with the recreation corridor also would include, although not specifically designated in green, the light path, the multi-use path, sorry.
Now, for what it's worth, I think part of the reason why they chose that geography is that that's what we've been talking about in terms of corridor study. I think we framed it as Presque Isle to the lighthouse property quite a bit when we've been talking about it, so. And in reality, if we get to the point where we can hire, get, have a study done for the recreation corridor, I would go far, right? Go to Madison Park.
How does it relate, has that heard of the city as one for a grant or some kind of transportation or is that happening? Maybe that, is the corridor maybe part of that?
The city, no, not exactly. So the corridor, the city has accepted a grant, been awarded a grant for planning grant for micro mobility, we're talking about like, how to, how to maybe accommodate better for everybody's safety, um, you know, a trend that's not going away. And separately, we've got another grant that we haven't heard back from that was hopeful for, like, specifically for on-street.
Okay, so that's, I just was curious, is that just part of the recreation corridor we've been talking about?
Certainly would be looking at that corridor heavily with that micro mobility grant.
Well, getting back to this immediate thing, how do other commissioners feel about? Can we, can you pull up a map actually, so that people can see the map we're talking about? So just, you were kind of curious, like, the, the green coastal area there, so. Like, it's considered part of the recreation corridor, but it seems to sort of end at the lighthouse, so some of us were just wondering, why is it in there since?
Well, you have to remember, this is a typology and I think that typology was encompassing the heaviest used recreation corridor in the city of Marquette, specifically the one that was mentioned, like David said, for the possible future study.
Yeah. One of Fisher's questions was, are there are three recreation?
Yeah, the Lower Harbor one was mentioned in the historic corridor district as the festival area.
Then Maria, yeah. I don't know, I mean, it's not, I'm not going to lose sleep over if it doesn't change, it just, it left me scratching my head why the recreation corridor stopped at the lighthouse when so much recreation happens in Harbor and South Beach and all that. That would be cool. Yes, Commissioner Laurie?
I guess it would be simple enough change to just correct the statement about the, the interrupted, I correct the problems. Just incorrect. That's easy enough. Thank you.
Okay, well, it doesn't sound like other people are too bothered by this, so maybe it's not, we're a favorite as it is? Yeah? Right, there's be too much to, too big of a hand in terms. Okay. All right, um, now, our next comment was addressed, always addressed, so we need to get down to the supplemental document. Well, just a point of process, do we want to just focus on the main doc, main document first or do we want to do all the, all the supplemental document as well? You're going to?
Sure.
Supplemental, okay, let's jump to the supplemental then. Um, so, yeah, where are we at here? So supplemental document, page sixty-eight. This looks like an easy fix, if that's what the check means, yeah?
Typo, yep.
Okay.
Easy fix.
Easy fix, okay, number two, according to, I think that's two, scroll up. Supplemental document, page seventy, traffic count of two forty-nine, this is for Westboro and River and Coffee's area.
Yeah, I just put a note up, we need to verify that. Of course, that's vehicles per hour instead of vehicles per day. Yeah, no, we need to verify that. So we're, what I'm doing, just so you know, this, based upon everything we hear tonight, we're going to bounce it off the consultants. I have a call scheduled with Emily later in the week, so this is part of the verification that I'll verify with me.
Okay. All right. Moving down to supplemental document, page eighty-three, this looks like an easy fix, right? That's just kind of a, a, all right, number three, general comment. So, um, Commissioner Laurie, you want to, kind of, tell us a little bit about that?
Well, it was just kind of a summary, I'm thinking of, of what I had read. After participating in several of these in the past and even just observing a lot as us and staff, uh, the process of past years, it seems like each one of the plans that develop takes some more steps toward making the city look like other cities. There's always something, well, I'll, I'll use the term placemaking because that was, I don't know, that worked its way in a few ago. But we're trying to, it seems, make Marquette's placemaking match placemaking elsewhere, whether it's cafes on the sidewalk or, uh, any number of things. And I think, well, I know as a native of Marquette, who's lived here over seven years now, that, um, I think, I know what Marquette citizens really want. I realize the city is changing, it's changing quite rapidly, and so a lot of newcomers maybe don't want to see things like this, but I think they come here because Marquette is somewhat unique in its architecture and its cultural activities, natural resources, travel opportunities, any number of things. And I'd like to see plans, future plans, that, um, recognize that and try to not only preserve, but build on that and enhance that rather than taking the latest, um, planning idea that's, you know, it's grown by the Michigan Planning Association or, uh, Fairland, whatever, um, that's designed to try to fit more people into an area, but not necessarily preserve the reason they want to hold it in the first place. But I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, that was beautifully said. I think a lot of us feel.
Would you agree that, would you agree that the typologies do that though, by breaking those out into very distinct neighborhoods that people already like living in and trying to encompass in those?
Um, just my thought on that, because that is one of the, like, one of the things that we specifically worked with the consultants on was coming up with those typologies because people like living in a certain neighborhood for what it is now. Number one, we did, originally did the land development code and suddenly we got rid of all these non-conforming properties because people like living on fifty by one twenty-five foot lots and they didn't like thirty foot front yards and it wasn't cool to do gentrification. So I'm just interested in your opinion on that.
I do think the typology is a less positive step in that direction. Obviously, doesn't really satisfy every budget because it's, it's after a superimposed on a, an area that isn't as simple as six or seven typologies will allow on a map. But, um, you know, there's a lot of sub-neighborhoods within those typologies and, you know, obviously you're here for one on a regular basis, the original subdivision, the type thing that there is going to change. There's a lot of very dedicated neighborhoods that people want to keep the way they are or want to see developed in a certain direction, separate from the rest of the community. And if they're willing to put in that effort and it's not contrary to the city's ultimate aims, I think the city should be supporting it, not trying to make a one-size-fits-all or even a one-size, or say six or seven sizes that the city, um, recognize a group that gets together. And that was, I, that was actually, I think in the 2015 master plan, if I recall, was the promotion of neighborhood associations, um, where people would, would actually take some ownership as a group and try to make improvements within their area to, uh, make even work out. So I think that was a first step in that direction. Obviously, probably come up with fifty alone, super blows in there, it would be a very beautiful plan.
It'd be seven hundred forty-six if you, someone on there.
Um, Commissioner Laurie, I think your comments always speak to the importance of this conversation and to the work that staff has done to try to really get at the nuance of the public comment and also Commissioner's comment. Yeah, I think that was really well thought and I agree a hundred percent with that spirit of, we, you know, those of us on this commission can't help, we have lost track a number of times, we heard like, we don't want to just be a trap city, right? And so we need a plan that reflects the nuances and the things that make our community special. Um, okay, so number three is, I think, are we, are we willing to move on from that? I think that one was pretty well made. Staff has some ideas about how you might organize that into how to, to the consultants? Yeah? Okay, so we can move on to Commissioner Gattlieb's comments here, on page eighty, going back to the main master plan document, introduction, maybe, maybe something as, almost kind of, I think, a disclaimer, right? To, like, all, we heard a lot of public comments about various aspects of the recreation and we talked earlier last time, that's, that will be addressed in the parks and recreation plan, which is forthcoming. So I really like that language being provided for us, Commissioner Laurie, and those things that were, we know these are very important, we know people want pink with all sorts. That's not really what this document's about, but stay tuned within the parks and park stuff, right? So any other step-offs about that, I thought that was a nice statement.
Too good. It's impossible to add as well, not free from. Oh, no, yes, my comment was a good idea. I, I would make one correction, one little correction to the statement.
Sure. Sure.
After the word dog, dog, tart, and comma, or pickleball development, to at least be or, because I say or in the next, in the next.
Wow.
And you'll bother me if I see it, like, oh. This is a cross talk, so it's easy. I would put this in, where, where would I put it? I would put it on page eight, right, and I did, yeah, because I think we received so many comments during, from the public comments about all these, that I think if we all go to disclaimer in there somewhere, people will say, well, what happened to the pickleball courts? It's like, well, it's coming, because we need to be recreational.
I think, I think we're gonna tweak this a little bit.
Then don't flip my, I don't, don't carry out these steps.
No, we won't, we won't do that, but, okay, we'll tweak it a little.
But there's a section.
I just think it's a great idea, because a lot of the comments were pickleball, 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 pickleball.
Yeah, it says, today, leisure recreation is becoming identity, but, ooh, next sentence could be, or more, blah, 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 you know, that would be a great spot. Uh, so thank you for that, which, uh, moving on.
And so those who have attendance, that pickleball is important, but there's also a Parks and Recreation Master Plan that's being developed and will be adopted at this time, that is gonna address all of those on-the-ground recreation activities. It's just a more appropriate place for it, especially to get funding for it.
Uh, I think people would be really pumped to see, like, the, anyway, okay, uh, page fifteen, uh, let's see, Forests and Bourbon, give a color, I'm sure that our would be specifically mentioned in the first, first paragraph, there will be a current sketch agreement of purchase, how more sound a land there, preserving technically.
I, this may help the planning commission, but my comment was that land is all, everything that is ever gonna be sold is sold, because the rest of it is a perpetual conservation easement.
Commissioner Gottlieb?
My comment to that is, I'm, I'm aware that it isn't a conservation easement, would it hurt to put it in the master plan again, so that the residents of Marquette are aware or made aware again that this is not a concern? If it's something simple, and.
Yeah, so that was the, um, that's in the typology, I think we could probably put it, what do you think, Dave, like, in the shadow box off to the side, that conservation easement, purpose land, or something like that?
That's why we use the word burn, yeah. I mean, perpetuity, use that, that's a good one, people like perpetuity, it's like legacy, one word, I mean.
Well, I'm just thinking all out. I just, my reasoning is, just to avoid anybody coming back and saying, this is a dinner, it is, similar land uses section could be mentioned, because there's a large conservation easement, so.
I think that's important, so just make it out, there's illegal, you know, illegal efforts to protect that land, I, I would also agree, I don't know where that vocation is, but I like that.
I think if you get that, the timing of the shadow box, something, yeah, that would be nice.
All right, uh, and we say, you know, that is certainly, well, if we gotta, okay, I'm trying to take notes and topic, okay. Um, page sixteen, it's Western Marquette, in our last meeting, we talked, um, Tango just came up in public comments tonight, too, about deadened streets and connecting them, um, maybe adding language, deadened streets to be connected where possible with neighborhood input, you know, maybe softening that language is in there now, if not getting rid of that language, what others think about that? Mr. Laurie?
Well, I guess, watching your, the recording of last, you know, since I wasn't here, um, listening to some of those kinds of things, came up with a possible sentence to insert in there, it's a little bit long, but, um, and maybe, uh, just certain elements can be taken from it, but, uh, something to the effect that the city continue to evaluate opportunities and act where appropriate to enhance its existing transportation method by, um, providing improved facilities for pedestrians, bikes, cyclists, public transit, and other transportation options for safety, environment, and other community concerns warrant, recognizing that connections for bicycle and pedestrian traffic sometimes negate the need for through streets for automobiles. All right, uh, and I know the consultant felt that some of our blocks were, but, uh, I think one of the areas that he pointed to was my neighborhood over in the, our quest border of town, and, um, I need to, mine does not seem like a very low block, uh, I'm not comfortable with that, I, we, there are a couple of deadened streets that would reduce it to have that, if they were put through, but they were in the front of the flat, in most cases, and the city has even done some making right away over there, so I really don't see the necessity of it in most cases, I'm sure there's a few that actually would benefit in some parts of town, um, I know when I was trying to, um, plan for maintenance of streets and layout flower routes and beverage collection routes and things like that, it does help if you have a fully through street grid, but, um, again, Marquette has developed in a unique way, and there's some reasons that some of these streets should stay there.
Mr. Richard?
Um, I was thinking about, um, what you said about, uh, the putting the streets all the way through for fire and ambulances and making services like that, had it ever been considered that, um, those kind of posts that can go into the ground that keep vehicles out, but then are raised at a certain, oh, I know that we have long winters, but is there any, you know, that, there's that mobility, and if, yeah?
Are you referring to, like, seasonal ollers, almost?
Yeah.
Or, 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 posts, uh, do we have, so we have the university subdivision already, and when I was communicating to the folks at university subdivision at the, a couple of months ago, when this draft was released, um, was that their neighborhood is actually a good example of what can be done there, because we extended a bike path, that there's enough right of way between the trees to fit an emergency vehicle, and if you go by there, there's two very large boulders that are placed in a manner that would not allow a vehicle to drive through to that at this moment, so, there's, there's ways to do things like that.
Yeah, have you seen those mobile posts that I speak of, that?
Yeah.
Would we be able to add that into the master, sorry, would we be able to add that to the master plan in some sort of way, to, where's that part of the complete streets?
Actually, I think Mr. Laurie, this sentence, would be appropriate.
We, we, we got that on record, right, though? He, he, he.
You won't be able to read it out there, I'll have to, I'll have to read it, but, uh, on the ollers, um, they haven't been trying to, but a few places are all good, the area where Heritage Trail, that's a remark, and whatever, and they have not held up, uh, a very feasible, the, or winters and things, so, I don't believe there are any still in place that have been installed in there.
Okay, it sounds like we can use that language and consult, are you happy with that, Sugar?
Yes, yes, I think that's great, thank you.
Excellent, okay, let's move on to page twenty-two, the Dead River.
Uh, page one.
Twenty, yeah, South Market, sorry, um, street connectivity on page sixteen, consider this year, um, defining elements working with MDOT to reduce car speeds. Yeah, that's, that's something that I hear a lot, and we heard in public comments, too, just like, what can we do to calm that traffic down in South Market? We did kind of talk about what's in there, but that's the plan, I don't know.
I understand that they're very well, that they can do, and that, and that is basically in charge of that.
Yeah, Mr. Gottlieb?
I, I understand that MDOT is in charge and holds all the cars here, and, and I realize there's very little we can do, however, would it not be remiss, um, the planning commission's part and the city commission's part not continually ask MDOT to say, hey, this is not right, we know what your rules are, this is what, we know our community better than you do, this is wrong? I think this needs to be in there. It's not MDOT, though, that would be a legislative ask, I don't care who you ask, I think it needs to be in there, so we can say, this is something that's serious, somebody's gonna die here, I'll handle it.
We've, we've talked a lot to MDOT and our police department about the issue, and we come back to the same thing, that the judge just won't enforce the speed control, any, any further, creating any further speed controls out there, um, and it, it's a legislative issue, that, and that was a bill that was in front of the state legislature this year to change the motor vehicle codes, and that municipalities and other jurisdictions, counties can have control over the speed limits, because right now, we have not, on a state-funded item.
Well, we have the eighty-fifth percentile study, which would, which then would legalize all the speeding going out there.
Well, it, so the, the legislation was to remove the eighty-fifth percentile methodology as the way MDOT sets the speed limits, and to have that local authorities be able to negotiate with MDOT over something between fifty-five and eighty-five percentile in the speed limit, for setting those and where to set them, and so forth. Right now, there's, short of that, there's no way those speed limits are gonna be moved, the, the, where the speed limits are set geographically, or how, how, up and down, um, so, it's, we really need to get that legislation passed, and that is a city commission issue, to some extent, the lobby, the state legislature.
That's before Commissioner Gottlieb explodes, because I know he's, he's exploding. Part, part of this plan, and, you know, that, again, understand your passion for this, also understand that when you put something in the plan, you wanna manage the expectations of the people that you did as well, that's kind of what we're coming from on that.
That's an excellent point, and I appreciate what you're saying, but if we don't lay it in there, doesn't mean that we'll just ignore you?
No, I don't think so.
What's your thoughts?
For the audience, could you explain the eighty-fifth percentile rule? Eighty-fifth percentile? Yes. Uh, real quick, so, a speed study, uh, the eighty-fifth percentile rule says, basically says in a nutshell, that's, speeds are established by the speed at which eighty-five percent of the vehicles are traveling in that area, so, uh, in that area right now, you probably have cars going fifty-five in the, as they come down the hill in a lower area, if you were to open it up for a speed study, the eighty-fifth percentile would end up at fifty-five miles an hour. So whenever the speed eighty-five percent of the cars are going, is the, is what the speed limit is set at.
Question regarding that?
Yeah. The speed limit was changed, for instance, at the top of the hill to thirty-five miles an hour, that wouldn't need the percentile drop, because eighty percent of the people who fell and who did were automatically dropped down to forty miles an hour.
But you can't change this, the speed limit at the top of the hill would have to go, undergo an eighty-fifth percentile study in order to drop down to thirty-five.
At some point, though, we can keep working back to how you were.
I clearly understand you, and I, and I think it's, you know, it's, there's nothing wrong with saying, the city worked with MDOT to, you know, address vehicles prudence or something, but I think it needs to be, the city needs to, above, it needs to be something legislative, right? I, just caution, putting something in a plan that we can't do.
No, I want to work the rest of the commission.
Because I don't want city commissioners showing, but Dennis, it's in the plan, he said we could do this, right?
And Dennis is fine with setting expectations, good, now, there's, um, there's one state that has repealed that eighty-fifth percentile rule so far, and other states are trying, so, and, and Michigan actually had a bill, so we're making progress on that, that law goes back to nineteen forty-seven, and the courts have upheld it, and that's something I've talked to our attorney about, because actually, the way it's interpreted, it, it actually shouldn't be at the eighty-fifth percent, if you read the text of the law, but it's been interpreted by the courts and upheld in cases to mean the eighty-fifth percent. Um, so, I, I've actually asked about, is that something we could go accordingly, because people do die from it, and, and, and it's not just South Front Street that's a problem, it's a problem on US forty-one and twenty-eight throughout the whole corridor, it's a problem in South Market on M five five three, especially around the ski hill, and, um, it, it is something we should be able to change, um, and, um, I do know our legislators are looking at how, you know, getting a, a critical master change that law.
We, we, yeah, I like how.
Well, continue to advocate for legislation to address speed limits.
Yeah, yeah, or there's something about, you know, I'm sure Laurie gave us some language that kind of got at the connectivity issue, or different language to use in that section on page twenty, or twenty, twenty-one, even, because we're talking about the five-way highway, vehicles often traveling thirty-five miles per hour or higher, and then we talk about, but yet, there's all these, like, kids walking to middle school, and, you know, there's, like, this just division of that, maybe this area, if there's some way that we can talk about through our, you know, planning or whatever, but is there ways to, like, traffic, not traffic only, because that's specific infrastructure, but if there's something we could put in there, just say, like, this is an area that we, we're kind of encouraging, educating legislative action, or whatever it might be, but, I think, I think it's an important problem that we talk about in various ways, we talk about building the bridge, you know, to be the gateway, like, we're kind of already getting at the problem, but maybe being a little more. Yeah.
One, one of the options would be to connect streets to provide alternate routes, but not gonna go there.
Well, those streets are connected, I think we just have to cross over the five-way highway.
Well, what about that link, that sentence I gave you, continue to advocate for legislation to address speed limits?
I think that would be great.
And something, maybe, just a little more, say, speed limit issues have been identified in along the state highway corridors in several areas.
That's great, yeah, because it does get at the market, now, because that's also.
Where would that go, Dave?
In the transportation section, it was in one still, one time, yeah, in this transportation stuff, on my own.
Okay.
All right, we're all ready for that?
Thank you. Thank you.
Cool. All right, now, page twenty-two, Dead River, page twenty-two, given public comments, aid to preserve the archery, I was considering the work in common, defending elements, maybe so. Is that an easy fix? Sounds like an easy fix.
Is there any harm in re, re, or inform all of them, or not inform, just to say, you are here?
Dennis, is that, is that an easy one for you, Dennis?
Depends on what the end result is, I mean. Well, let me go back to my notes, because I have a bunch of them. So is this, is this spoken in terms of a future expansion? Is that what we want to call it? Parking, this is the area that I believe is referred to as actually VLP property. Where the current north County Road five fifteen north for all head. The VLP property, sorry. VLP isn't going to be able to sell that land. I don't see, I, I just don't understand why the, let me rephrase that. I don't think it's an issue just the leading word informal, just like the parking lot. There's no way anyone's going to want to change it. I, VLP isn't going to want to change it. They have police for that, I mean, they can't sell it. They also don't want to make it a formal parking lot. But we're not saying it's a formal parking lot, we're just not saying it's informal. That's semantics.
But if it is informal.
Depends how that's interpreted, because somebody could say, well, look, now see, it's no longer called informal, so let's just go ahead and put the signs up.
The signs actually are over here, see. But that was with permission, the okay, Montreal Network or NPM, depending on how old you are, has put signs up years ago and VLP is not having any issue. I'm speaking as past president of NPM when the signs went up. In this case, not the presidency.
Dennis, is that, are we, are we removing formal?
It's going to require some planning commission discussion, I know it's semantics, but.
Okay, so is any, what do other commissioners think about removing the word informal from defining elements, defining sentence for traffic?
Just to be clear, formal parking lot is a paid parking lot with, with striking on.
That's kind of where the, the normal.
Rustic?
Like rustic, B and B?
You're not even getting there halfway through and this one isn't worth my dying on the scale.
Okay, we're okay, because you think it is verbal? Yeah, I don't think I have started.
Well, I did like the word rustic, whoever suggested that.
Rustic, rusty, that's true, because that's.
So the South Throwhead is a formal parking lot and it is not paid. But we own that one, we, I'm sorry, NPM owns that one now. So.
Okay, I sound like, or, yeah, that one maybe we actually think. Okay. Page twenty-six, university, this would include essentially closing seven street, closure of the eye, opening other street extensions, construction.
Be a Steve Laurie sentence. That's my recommendation.
Absolutely, same with the previous one.
Okay, so we're good with nine?
Yeah, and I just cheated and used your understated idea.
Oh, yeah, that looks like an easy fix, right? Just changing on the page.
Yeah, that was definitely a check mark.
Okay, I was like, that's.
It was supposed to have been done previously.
I thought it was kind of funny, actually. Okay. Okay, page forty. So this will be ratio options to various sections. Mr. Gavely, can you just kind of talk us through page forty-one?
Well, actually the next three, page forty, page forty-one, page forty-two, all deal with guiding principles as defined on the top of page forty. And it took me a while to figure out how to do this. And it may be just my misunderstanding, but when we look at environmental resilience thing, which is the first box that comes up after the, where to define the A, B, C, D, E, F guiding principles. I was just thinking that the guiding principle for environmental resilience, we might want to include E, trade, safe and durable transportation, recreation options year round to some of those action items listed specifically. I numbered them, so I have a couple to my numbers. Four, six, seven, nine, yeah. Just, it seemed to be common sense to me, but maybe I'm misunderstanding this. Four would be weapons. You know, which has recreational and recreational options. Many must use a lot, most are bird watching, for instance. Six would be, and this is ahead of me on this, work with Superior Watership, they have done a lot of work on trail, on weapon maintenance. Again, that would be recreation use. And so on, that was.
Okay, so you're just essentially suggesting we add E to those.
To those four.
Yeah.
In, in environmental resilience.
Anybody have? Uh, no, that makes sense to me. Easy fix? That was easy, okay. Any disagreements?
Sure.
Discussion?
Add layers.
That's a one. Okay, that's easy, okay.
No, I don't have a opinion of.
That point out, the one, I think you said nine is the form of track of steam.
Yeah, that's not right, that one I think, because we don't know what's going to happen there yet. And a lot of the public comment specifically said to maintain that either as green space or public space. With that in mind, it becomes recreation. That was my view.
That seems consistent with the public feedback, I presume. Okay, let's move on to housing, last one, last one's discussion, we're good with that. So guiding principle B, which is encourage quality housing at multiple price points and in locations with access to non-oralized infrastructure transportation. Add that into.
Well.
Every action.
There is housing opportunities. And so there's some there that are housing opportunities that don't have water B in there, it's like, oh, we don't know. By definition.
Right.
This is B.
Does that become redundant then?
I'm not the one who made that chart. But if you're going to use that chart, it has to be them. Again, that's my loss.
Especially if it's in some, but not understand. Yeah.
I think the way they defined it was just what actually encourages it versus what openly helps people. Yeah. But. Again, so.
Okay, so we're good, Mr. Primo, adding just the letter of B into pretty much all the housing types, is there anyone that is not relevant to the guiding principle B? But that. Okay, that seems like an easy fix. People are happy with that, adding B to all of them. Page forty-two, capital investment, guiding principle A, which is steward and cherish our natural assets. Adding that into capital investment at page forty-two. Actually, I don't know before. Promote the alignment, the healthy relationship between the tourist economy and residents. I'm sure the offer to host visitors and tourists does not also.
My rationale for that is we are relying on, on tourists to come up here to help support our economy. What brings the tourists up here is our natural asset stewardship. If we don't have our natural assets in mind, we're not going to have tourists.
Yeah. Makes sense to me. Anybody else? That makes sense, we're good with that? Okay, nice. Okay, so now we're on to Chris or Primo's comments. Wayne, do you want to explain the comment there? On page three of our comment sheet, I think there's one more.
One vote. Your definition of that, how it happened.
On page two. I think it had to do with maybe logistics of where we put the public comments, is that what we're going to get now?
Well, I, I just think after it goes over, all the comments, we tried to change everything. Then again, a lot of the stuff we've been going through.
Well, I would argue that the public comment period was only open from May to June. What was the, the closing end of May, June, you saw them?
May seventeenth to June, July eighteenth.
Of July, yeah.
Sixty-four days.
So it was like legally required.
I would maintain if the public actually knew are we trying to destroy residential neighborhoods? Stuff like that, they would really revolt, but it's not going to happen because they don't get into this stuff. And I also think that when you have all these meetings and stuff, should be taxpayers that make the decisions, not anybody that comes walking into a room and says, ooh, I'd like to see this, I'd like to see that. You know, I live in Harvey, I live in Trobridge Park or maybe I live in New York. But I want to have that for the beach and stuff, go ahead, cut me down.
What? Oh, I, respectfully, I don't think anyone's trying to destroy whole neighborhoods, we want to do it for taxpayers.
I was just going to say that everyone that thinks of public comment has to save their name and address. Everyone that made a comment this evening and or last meeting, let's not say it. Point of fact.
Yes, but a lot of these big meetings that are open, is anyone. The more people they could get, the better they could say this thing was gone over. They ask the people that come here, give them their address. There's a whole lot of people that don't come here. I would, I would agree that.
He did say that they do keep track of teammates that come and, that we speak publicly.
I'm sorry.
I think it's good to ask those questions or bring up those concerns, but it is stated, it's been stated that they do keep track of the individuals, so hopefully that is the case.
Okay. Chris Primo, did you want to talk about the definition of family?
Yeah, the definition we have of family, there's no reason to say that five unrelated adults can all live in a home. Because the way the definition of families is written, white people that walk down Washington Street together can be labeled as a family. But if you look at the law, the definition of a family is entirely different than what we have in our ordinance. The definition of a family is not a group of people that have something in common, make similar family. It says, the law says a family, it's a group of people, whether it is by blood, adoption, not just anybody, not five fishermen or ten guys that go to college so they can all live in the same house. Not a legal definition, and I don't think we should have it in there, that is so convoluted the way it is right now.
So that's, that was something that was in our endowment code, that's argument approved by the city commission to change the definition of family, but if you're suggesting you have language you want to put in the community master plan to revisit that or something, that's something we could maybe consider adding to the community master plan, but that already didn't get approved by the city commission, so it might be a little bit of a.
But they never changed it.
I think we change it up to five people, we raised it from four to five.
Yeah, that's a talk about unrelated adults.
Well, that.
It says not the definition of a family.
The, you, you, that may not be your idea of the definition of family or the standard definition of a family, but under the presumption of validity, you have to remember, because creating a definition in the zoning ordinance is a legislative act, it is presumed to be a valid definition. The community has decided that is the definition of family for the purposes of zoning and occupancy.
Well, then anyone would be a family.
No. Specifically called out in the line of development, but what is and what's not?
Okay.
But if you, if you're suggesting maybe we, if you want to put in the community master plan to revisit or something, you know, the housing section.
Just forget it, it's there, it's going to stay there. It's wrong, but it's okay.
I mean, it's definitely something I think we're all going to be looking at to see, like, does that change? You know, relieve a little bit of the housing pressure, how's that going to play out? I think we're all kind of looking to see like how that shakes out, but if it's something you want to continue what it says, I think that's an important one. Yeah?
Yeah, speaking of housing pressure, I think that if, like, seeing things through, if we didn't allow unrelated people to live, as Perwin suggested, there would be no housing for students anywhere in this city. Our university system would relax. It is not possible for them to house all of the students. We, we need to have unrelated people be able to live in, uh, living residence.
That's not what I said. I said, there's no reason to have that in there. Under the definition of a family in our ordinance, we don't need that in there because a hundred people will live in the same house as long as they have it. Activity that they all enjoy. The last time I asked to eat, go ahead. Uh, eight, nine fishermen or something, I said? He said, yes, that would be a family.
Five unrelated versus less than.
I don't think it's worth our time to argue over stuff that is that.
But if, if you have suggestions about ways to incorporate like future evaluation of the definition.
No, just leave it. Go ahead, it's not going to be changed because there's too many people that like it the way it is. And the, the five unrelated adults are a whole different theory, that's nothing to do with the definition of a family. So I'm not arguing that.
Are you, can you suggest, can you suggest that we have that allowed? You just want it to be named something other than a family?
No, that, that's not, that's five unrelated adults.
Yeah, he is suggesting using a different term.
I'm saying we should do it, we should use the legal definition of a family, so only what you're saying. That was only, the legal definition of family has nothing to do with the college rentals, nothing. You can have ten people in your college rental for all they care.
I think we'll go back here and keep going, because we do have.
We got, we got, we got. Go ahead. I got one question I'd like to go back to with the ask Dennis suggested. When we're talking about the property as well, going to be zone conservation. What do we, how do we, are we trying to control the property that's not in Marquette's city limits, that's out of the township? And that is controlled by their zoning? Or are we just not talking about that?
Right.
I'm pretty concerned with what you're referring to.
When we bought the two thousand some odd acres, the Harcourt property, right? Part of it is in the township. And we do not control what we can or can't do in the township. So when you were talking about that being conservation, are you also talking about the property in the township?
Now, the master plan reflects the community within the boundaries of the. No, the master plan reflects the community within the boundaries of the city of Marquette.
Okay.
Okay, um, let's continue on then to Commissioner Primo's comments here. Page nine, um...
We can actually, um, just for just culmination of all comments I had.
Okay.
Thanks to planning commission and credit line commission, uh, but they're mostly addressed from the staff. So we could actually go to eighteen year one two. I didn't, I only maybe wanted to, we could talk about, how we want to extend the development cells of our historic downtown into, um, the South Marquette and promote sort of historic development, but other than that.
Okay, can you point out which specific section you're referring to?
Uh, just the downtown east. Marquette, number sixteen.
West Marquette?
Yeah.
South Marquette?
The South Marquette.
Twenty-one.
Yeah. So it has the same sort of bones as our historic core, as we call it now. And I just thought, you know, since it's sort of the same, we can promote the same type with development pattern, um, and we could write that out in some way. But again, just, uh, discussion. I think it is pretty good the way it is currently, but if you wanted to add that specific part about the sort of development patterns, that's up to rate.
So just adding more to kind of the size of the South Marquette, kind of its own...
Yeah, it's so historic, distinct history, but it also has some relevant history to, you know, our downtown area as well. And how we talked about last week, or our last meeting, where they are sort of, you know, relatively developed the same pattern separately. But, let me see.
Okay, did you have some specific language, or I'm trying to look at the staff comments to see if they had some suggestions? Number sixteen of the staff comments.
I think Dave addressed something about the Form Based Code, we had tried it there.
Yeah. Wondering about that as well. Yeah, Dave, could you sort of go back into how, what you guys did with the Form Based Code? And I'll have a few unpopular, unworkable twenty nineteen...
Yeah, so at the same time, the city adopted the waterfront Form Based Code for, the Lower Arbor area up to, from Front Street, it actually extends from Ridge Street on the corner of Front down to, uh, Genesee Street, basically what encompassed the whole founder's landing project and the docks, Madison Park. Part of the property right, right across from Madison Park, the new townhouses, newish townhouses. So at the same time that was developed, this, a Form Based Code was developed for South Marquette. And that kind of had the same ideal. South Marquette has this historic nature, it has the bones for a historic downtown sort of center. And that was the intent of creating that. You know, I think, I, I wasn't that so, just right before I started working in the city. But I am familiar with what, why it was created. And I'm real familiar with all the problems that ensued from that. Form Based Code imposes design requirements on development that is not generally nearly as intense with a traditional zoning ordinance. And that just improved workability in South Marquette. Example is the building that became Courtyard's fabulous place now, right? But it was a block, cinder block building with very small windows on the, facing south. It was very difficult to, I don't know how many variances had to be acquired to develop it the way it was. And, and that was one property out of several that wasn't the same, kind of followed the same pattern. And if you continue to have properties that, it's just like we reformed our zoning ordinance, overhauled it for the residential districts, changed a lot of the standards because the standards were out of place, they were out of time, they were, they were not working for people. Requiring a seventy foot wide lot to be conforming for a residential property in the city of Marquette built on mostly fifty foot lots was ridiculous on its face and caused a lot of people to have to get variances to do anything. Because automatically their plots were non-conforming when they adopted that seventy foot standard in the nineteen seventies. So my point is anytime you've got a lot of non-conforming issues being presented and creating issues for development and requiring, uh, driving variances, the staff needs to look at that, the city needs to look at that carefully and see what can be fixed. Because, uh, variances are a sign that there's, it's, it's not a healthy, there's not a healthy code in place. If you've got a lot of variances, it costs residents a lot of money. A lot of residents don't have the money to, to see variances. A lot of developers are not going to do the projects if you have to encounter more barriers. So that's in a nutshell why the, the South Marquette Form Based Code was abandoned and we went back to, uh, traditional zoning. And, uh, but imposing on that, just like the rest of the city, when the land development code was adopted, was the recommendation from the twenty fifteen master plan to incorporate a lot more mixed use in, uh, certain corridors, including Division Street, to promote more, uh, more types of development that were appropriate in those corridors. A lot more flexibility for residential and commercial development to be combined or to be developed on its own with less restrictions. So it's, I, my, my view of it, it's been a good thing, uh, generally. And I think we've, we've seen more development at, that was what was intended with the Form Based Code. After the Form Based Code was abandoned, we've seen more development, I think, or more interest in development in that area with the current, or, uh, traditional zoning approach.
Commissioner Primo, this is a kind of...
Yeah, that's great, thank you, appreciate that, that's a pretty understanding or explanation of how we are today. So did that, then, yeah, I'm almost at the way it's...
Yeah, I'm set, any of these other, because you had a lot of the comments, it's very good.
Yeah, some of them were just, uh, at Wendy, but yeah, I'm almost at, I'll put it there. I'll set that here, they explained pretty well.
Okay, cool. Um, my comments, the first two there, page seven to page eight, were just typos, capitalization issues. So those look like they're easy. And just to clarify for the audience who came and talked about the downtown and east side typology. So to clarify those, just to make it absolutely clear, we are going back to historic core with the two distinct areas.
I can make that presentation now if you're walking to the...
Sure, yeah, just because I think that was a big point of interest to people who showed up tonight.
Sure. Do you have that?
Other than Mark that?
The Mark that, happy. So as I mentioned at the last meeting, we originally had called it historic core. And then I didn't, I recommend the consultant not call it historic core because of the several times that I've been involved with very testy meetings on trying to create a local historic district with a historic review committee and everything else, and I didn't want the community to interpret it that way. So we came up with downtown and east side. I recommend we go back to calling it the historic core because that's what the typology is based on. And when you read the typology itself, it is reflected in that. Can you go to the next page, Dave? After that, so we call it historic core. There's one key part of this, right, other than the, other than changing the name throughout, throughout, throughout. I think this is one of the sections that gave Dr. Conley some heartbeats for. It's because it previously read that downtown and the east side can benefit the most by infilling service parking lots, multi-story mixed-use buildings, commercial. Putting a clarifying in here, the downtown area of the historic core can benefit the most by such and such, which separates the residential from the commercial. Can you go to the next one, Dave? What are we going to put on here? I did not highlight this on here, but in the character of the neighborhood from here to here, it really breaks out the residential houses, it speaks to them. They're two to three stories in height scale, the position, they have their own section in here. The rest of it refers to the commercial section. And I took out the raised mid-block crosswalks. So I didn't even want to get into that discussion, we tried those a million times and they failed. But the most important one, if you go back, is to make it very clear that a lot of what you're proposing here is the downtown area of the historic core, when it speaks to anything that could happen in the future. That's, that's what I came up with in a nutshell. I mean, it was very simple changes, but sometimes, at least when I looked at it and Dave looked at it with me, that we thought sometimes a simple change like that might help, uh, the folks that would have a concern in there.
Yeah, I invite folks to, Dr. Conley, do you want to?
Yeah, so Northway, Charter Boulevard be in the residential or the downtown part of that split out?
That will be in the residential part of that.
So as we develop a future land use map, master plan, land use map.
Zoning.
Zoning.
After that.
Okay, I get it, and that's, I'm not confusing that this is a zoning discussion, this is, this is a succession, different processes. And I get that too, I've been at the receiving end of that. Another story. But I want to make sure that, make sure Boulevard is considered part of that residential historic core and not an extension of downtown.
Correct.
But it's really its own recreation corridor, the core length of the recre, like the east of the...
It's recreational, but let's not put hotels.
Yeah, I think we're to agree with that, so, yeah.
Okay.
I think this language really helps.
So what I think about now, I'll, this, I think Dave and I'll have that conversation with Ross on if we just don't extend the, the recreation corridor to Madison Park and Hill to Bird with one stone. That a lot of these changes here, I think, kind of makes everybody happy. What's your opinion of that, Dave?
Yeah, could I ask a quick question about...
Maybe sit here for two hours, though.
It was worth it.
Exactly, historic core, and then speaking of the downtown, but then we also have those residents that are below the downtown, you know, some of the downtown area, that included in historic core as well.
Was there shown on the map, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so that they're in down.
Yeah, and again, that reflects, you know, probably with the exception of the, the historic district itself that I know you folks have worked so hard on, uh, over the years. I mean, that does reflect the historic, like, this is how Marquette started, right? These were these neighborhoods, it was this downtown, and that was kind of like what it was. And that's why you see from a planning sense, a lot of things are very similar.
Can you have one comment? No, just kidding. Okay, Commissioner Primo, did you have a follow up?
I'm moving on now, no problem.
Okay. Uh, I'm satisfied by that, I, I like the historic core, I think it addresses some of the issues we've heard from the public about potential...
So I don't even lose my sleep over this, for like four days, nothing.
Oh, you're moving on, okay. Oh, no, it's good.
I think we said that we have to last then.
Okay.
Good job, Dennis. Um, okay. Uh, let's see, we talked about that, the recreational quarter of South Carolina.
You have a question?
Oh, yeah, Commissioner Primo.
I hate to be, because I'm going to. The term indigenous, in this case, I don't think should be capitalized.
Uh-oh, but would you...
It's a, it's a generic term in this case, you are not referring to a specific indigenous population. There's just uses of the term indigenous as the people who were there.
Is it indigenous people, because usually indigenous people prefer to have it capitalized.
Well, I read a several style of groups.
Uh-oh.
And everybody's different, but...
Commissioner Primo, you're rolling in like, what planes are rolling?
No, dude, you shouldn't hear me get it, this is my kid. But I, I just not sure it should be capitalized, but again, this is not my bill to die on, I don't care. But I'm not sure it should be capitalized. It's a generic use of the term indigenous.
Indigenous people, I mean, I think you could refer to a specific group of indigenous people.
Are we referring specifically to the Inshabbi?
Oh, maybe we should.
Yeah, we should.
Let's say Inshabbi.
I think so.
Which is, that would be a capital A.
That is a capital A.
I changed my comment, can we turn that into Inshabbi? Because that would be more specific.
But...
I know, even like five thousand years ago, the woodland people, I know, but I think typically we reference the...
Yes, we refer to Indigenous people.
Those later indigenous people, then it would be capitalized.
I think we should use Inshabbi, because that is the...
I'm really happy that we're arguing about this. This is why I have a big box.
No, no, I really am, because it could be, we could be stuck back at the historic goal, so have at it.
Can we do, are you guys good with using the specific group of people that came here five years ago, Inshabbi?
I think that would be one great one. So we're going to change it to, it's not gonna be indigenous.
Oh wait, it already says was the first home to Inshabbi, three buyers. And, oh, it's indigenous people living in...
Yeah, yeah. So we can use it, so.
Indigenous people. Think so?
I think it's in there, I think it's in Inshabbi.
Okay, okay, I will, that'll still be there. Okay, I'm going to go ask my indigenous fellow friend though. Not there, no, okay. Uh, where are we?
Here.
Oh, the cultural trail, yeah, so that, that was a substantial thing that I know the Office of Arts and Culture was pretty adamant, but I think I saw that there was an email exchange and then it's...
We wanted to you guys from Arts and Culture.
Yeah, but they were happy, you know, they were happy, you didn't see the link.
I think that's great.
Yeah, and now we have the main master plan summary, not just...
And we're going to add a picture, right?
Yeah, it comes with a link.
Can we put the map of the cultural trail in this plan to get the video? Would it not just have like, put the actual map?
Yeah. It's, it's a one-page ad.
What do you mean?
It doesn't, it's a one-page thing. It doesn't move text around.
Okay.
It just moves everything on page, because it's a one-page doc and graphic.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then where we add the link in for the cultural trail takes you to all the stuff on that cultural...
I think that'd be great, it would get them, they'd really like it, grant something they might not have the ones get if it's just a supplemental material. So that maybe in the main master plan, it's pretty key, but, so. Okay, great. So we're all in brutes on that? That's good. That's good. Um, okay, I understand that we already said that, oh, this was just on page twenty-six, this is a language thing. Be irrelevant for people who don't work in order, but I mean, it was like, ooh.
I think it said they got checked.
Is that a check number?
Yeah.
Twenty? Twenty-six? Page twenty-six, yeah.
Yeah, that's a check, page twenty-six, the second one at twenty-six, I think we had.
Oh, yeah, no, the, the other quote here. About N M U being recognized for business, sustainable business education, which is great, that is a really important and exciting program, but there's also like, there's a lot of sustainability work happening in sciences, arts, English, so I thought I'd just change it to be a little bit more accurate about N M U is recognized for regional and national leadership roles in rural economics and sustainability. So it's not just business, but it's like other programs. I don't know if anybody else has any opinion about this, it's just.
We have no opinion really, our staff, we just said you guys need to discuss that, because you don't interview better than.
Yeah, I was kind of curious how they got like the sustainable business program, because I think we only got like seven majors in that.
We made a big bet with. N M U.
Okay. Oh, I see, yeah.
Okay, perhaps might have happened ahead in the official, that was the problem with business.
Got it, well, we could be a little more inclusive, sustainability related programs, I think speaks to our broad liberal arts programming that we have, it's not just business. You guys are okay with that?
Sure.
Cool. Oh, yeah, community gardens, I guess it technically says like north of Fair Street, north of Fair Street, maybe the two-story mixed-use buildings and community gardens. Not recommending growing food on a closed outside, I thought would be important, no, but. Commissioner, did you have a comment, Commissioner?
Yeah, I think it's actually prohibited by EPA regulations.
So there's a new care plan for that property, you can't do any of that stuff.
You might be able to do race garden beds, I'm not sure.
I love the idea of community gardens, but I was like, maybe not on that specific location.
I thought they were around, I thought they were around some city forests and parks.
But that, we asked, no, there's property that has, that has some native species in it.
Oh, where's that now?
Just on the line. Actually, east of Lake Erie.
Okay.
I don't know that there's a native species in there, because I know I had viewers looking to put it like trail interpreted little thing.
It was originally communicated to the city that, that there were, and it was a biology department.
Okay.
I think I heard some, I thought it was like, uh, some type of owl was in it, like, maybe that was.
Okay. All right, well, we're getting a little sidetracked, but, um, I think it may be just not, I mean, I want to recommend community gardens somewhere, but just not excited. Where that goes.
To bring up that page. Thirty-one.
Page thirty-one. The large undergrowth parcels north of Fair Street, maybe, this is the second to last period that may allow other ones that are in two sort of section. The community gardens pop up anywhere else from the plan?
Well.
Yeah, we may not have community gardens.
I know, but I do like community gardens, I just don't want them there. I don't know, I think getting rid of it would make that simple, just to get rid of. Does that make sense? Never thought I would advocate against anyone in community gardens.
Actually, I don't think the ones that were in place on that press scale park in here anymore, because of the rain, because all of that.
Really?
There's still replacement at Park Cemetery. But there was an area when Park Cemetery couldn't handle the ban, there was an area created.
Once you loosen up the, like, the residential agriculture stuff, then the two rounds or three rounds go on the L B C, everybody's doing that new yard.
Exactly, yeah, Commissioner Primo, do you have a comment?
Oh, I hope that at the cemetery, but there's a waiting list to be able to do that, I don't know.
There may be, I guess.
So one thing, just, one thing we're not evaluating, because it's a piece in itself and we can't do any edits, is the whole resiliency assessment. Which is a large document that treats a whole bunch of issues. Like, well-impact development techniques that include community gardens. So that's, that's not included in the deck we're looking at here, that's a whole. So we could probably take out that community gardens, because you can click on that resiliency document and we'll drill down to that level detail for the city as a whole.
Okay.
And then you wouldn't have to deal that much.
Could we put community gardens in there?
Maybe you can lose sleep for four nights.
I always think of.
I think, and you did say that there is community gardens mentioned in that?
The residency document, yeah, the residency document is all about climate and adaptation and all that good stuff.
And community gardens are in there too?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure they are.
Yeah, okay. All right, let's keep moving then, page thirty-five. Again, kind of in the spirit of the public comment that we heard tonight, in the downtown east side, now Historic Core. It said, the language on page thirty-five said require buildings to be at least two stories in height. And that's in the very top right box in the, that little chart of the zoning description. Yeah, so I'm, I suggest you change from, maybe change it to recommend instead of require because there are some historic buildings that are not two stories, that we may want to get more access to. And also, there might be things, I know events meeting all that is important, but in this particular area, given essentially the east side residential preference, maybe we recommend at least two stories instead of required two stories. Right. What do you guys think about that?
I'm in love with it.
You're okay with that? Okay, you have any comments?
Okay.
You're good, okay. Um, okay. Adding, continue to develop cities cultural trail on page forty, that seems like that's been addressed, I think. Again, cultural trail stuff, vulnerability, I think we've addressed the cultural trail in that other section. Oh, I provided a little bit of language, just because in the introduction of this whole thing, you know, yes, we do very much value our outdoor recreation, our natural beauty and everything, but I do think like culture and arts is a hugely important part of our community, also that really doesn't get as much airtime in this document, so I don't know, I provided a couple of potential language options to add in there. That kind of connects the natural environment to our creative communities that we have here. In general, I would just say like overall comment, I was, I was hoping to see more distinction of arts and culture in the master plan, which I think we've achieved a little bit, but maybe putting a statement, a short statement up in the introduction.
I mean, that could be beneficial for brand, that's what I'm saying, for branding, especially.
Yeah, and I just think, for all the things that happened, Harbor Fest, Root Fest, you know, it's like, we have all these whole things. Fresh Food Bill Festival, there's a connection between the place and the creative. What others think? Are you okay? You know, adding, it's, it doesn't have to be a huge deal, just adding a little bit of language to say something about that.
I got you, if that's what you want.
Good, you guys okay with that? Okay, um, and then the last comment I have, I think we went over for Commissioner Gaville's time, is just making sure that we are carefully went through all that public comments, and we did our best to incorporate it in various places in the master plan, so I think I'm feeling good. Did our best to listen to people and put that in the plan. So I think I'm good, is that all our comments, is there anything else that people would like to go over, add, definitely?
I think we still have one progress of one of the action items of pages of it, no, but it was to basically change the requirements for triplexes and quadplexes to match the standard personal family residences. I think that's going a little bit further than what I feel comfortable with. First of all, I made a motion to allow the triplexes in residential, I think historically they were. But I don't think that they fit on every residential lots, since we've already scaled back the requirements for residential lots, so I would, I would hope that.
Can we, can we change that to replicate what you approved already?
Sure.
From the land development code, because I think it's important, if there's any legal challenges, that there is at least something in there about it.
Yeah, I mean, even if it was on the order of, I think what we approved was the the triplexes and the two little buildings could be residential by red and the quadplex required, especially this. And that gave us the opportunity to require some different standards for quadplex. So if you want to move triplex, it already says in a separate line, I don't actually, I don't sorry, my words are over. For the two-unit, no, the duplex, duplex, okay. If you want to just move triplex to that one, that might have put some alternate wording of quadplexes. Those will be allowed in areas by special use or something in that deal. And with that, I'm not ready, but the action didn't seem consistent with what the way it's spelled out. For what you did, right? That was.
Yeah, I think that'd be great, it has a way to be consistent with what, because we had extensive conversation about triplexes, duplex, everything, so. Is that something that staff could do, like just make sure it's consistent? We're all good with that? To align the master plan with what exists and when. Good catch. Anything else, last, last chance, because I think this, this, just again, for the process, the goal of tonight is to kind of ask and go through all the comments, all the feedback, and then we'll send this out to the consultants. Will we see another draft then, they forgot us, will they give us a draft, and then we will go down that to send that out to the city commission to.
Yeah, well, actually, you will send it up to the city commission, and the city commission will I have to give back to on that one, you already sent it to the city commission.
But they haven't seen it at the latest.
They authorized it for distribution, I need to check with the presenters. I know there needs to be at least one publisher.
Oh, okay.
And I don't believe the city commission exercises their right to reject or adopt, that would go back to law, so in the spirit of managing your expectations, possibly.
All right, um, any last final comments?
I just wanted to say for that indigenous question, that was from a source, Margaret Vog. So that is a quote from that.
Oh, okay. Cool. All right, so.
I guess, just, just so, when we're room now, and she, the mayor is here, what kind of ballpark time periods are we looking at, yes, knowing that it has to go back to a consultant?
I don't know. It depends on the consultant, we're gonna meet with them on Friday, and we, the good news is, we have very clear changes that need to be made, there's not a lot of that baby stuff here, hey, bring me a rock so I can look at it, right? These are pretty directed changes, but I think we have a good handle on. My, my bigger concern is them doing a final proofreader. That's my bigger concern, is getting that taken care of, I'm not worried about the changes, so. I would like to, in a perfect world, get this before the planning commission in September, but yeah, the second year is September seventeenth, possible, if I'm not hearing you. We would need to turn that around a week before that. So, we've got about two weeks to make these changes. Proofreading correct? Very, got two days to make the changes, downtown, we need to have a proofread that next Thursday.
Okay. Given the speed of things up to date, I will keep my expectations up.
You know, in their defense, so half of their planning team quit and went, went to different, remember, Rowan took a different job and wasn't like they, I mean, they went for advancement positions, right? So in their, as they, halfway through it, they had some big personnel changes.
Oh, okay, well, thank you for that, I'll clarify in place. Okay, any of the last final comments of us before we go to the commission staff comment? Just getting every good? All right, okay, well, do you, commission comment, Commissioner Primo, you'll have to start us up?
Yeah, I like Steve's comments about Marquette. What Marquette was and what it's becoming. And one thing I don't understand is, I thought Mrs. Kelly said that that was federally pointed out as a historical district.
Yeah, national.
So.
There's a state historic district and a federal one, and the Argent Ridge Streets National Historic District is federal.
Well, this. I guess we can change that. I mean, I mean, that's what was gonna happen, but. And you used the word into perpetuity, and I asked Steve Laurie once, what does that mean? And Steve said, if the perpetuity is as long as someone can remember. I think that's a good answer. I'm not trying to be argumentative about this stuff, I just get upset about certain things. But hopefully you are, right? That's it.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to say that I'm grateful for everybody's comment, I think that that's what this is all about, making this a holistic document, so thank you all, thank you.
I would like to thank Dave and Dennis and everyone else on the planning commission for all of their hard work. Like to thank the public for their input, it seems like the most concerns were addressed. I was really excited, really, I did not know about the National Historic District, and I'm glad that that area is protected by that overlay. Thank you all, and I'm happy to be here.
Yeah, I'm just excited to see this planned operation, see the final edits completed, and thanks for everybody coming out tonight. It's been a very interesting process, and I'm glad to see you guys come up with it.
I maybe just especially thank Dave for providing the cuddles, and I wasn't wrong to, went right to you, and so they did. So we didn't get a calculation, and I think you did a good job. Satisfied with the following, but it's like, they hit what you want, that's it, thank you. Satisfied with the following, but it's like, they hit it, that's it, thank you.
I echo what you guys have come in on, thank you, and Dennis for your hard work and patience and dedication for planning mission, thanks.
Uh, you guys stole my thought, that was my comments too, just expression of gratitude of how great it is that we have a community where people show up for more than two hours on Tuesday night to give their input on documents that will help guide us to our shared vision of where, where we want to be and what, what our community is. Thank you Dennis and Dave for all your time and efforts to carefully go through all of our comments, to make sure they were addressed, and they will be addressed in the next draft. And for all of my co-commissioners spending time on this and getting into the weeds, because, uh, it does take a lot of time and energy, so thank you everyone for your work on this. And, um, with that, we will adjourn this meeting at eight. Oh, oh, sorry, yeah, with staff.
Oh, yeah, I gotta continue, who can I not? Appreciate it of everybody, um, yes, that's a good process. One other thing that may happen on the seventeenth is the Arts and Rank Master Plan, uh, may be presented to the planning commission for general, I would assume, kind of general comments. Uh, not on that date, but hopefully, you know, well before, we can get you a draft of it, so that you can look it over, and that's all, staff come here to present it, offer them some thoughtful comments. Um, we're not going to, uh, there's no reason to have a meeting on the third of September, there's no business, there is no business for the seventeenth either. So that's a good date to have a presentation on the Parks and Rank Master Plan, as well as a public hearing on the Community Master Plan, hopefully.
Right, so no meeting on the third?
Right.
Um, I don't have much to add, I mean, the big thing that I really appreciate from the planning commission and the community is your trust and confidence. Uh, not many people would change, allow me to change three or four words and have confidence, since that's gonna get us across the fidgets line. So I really do appreciate that, and you guys have been really good to me over twenty years, thanks.
Oh, one more thing, I could, that I'm, I am disappointed that our consultants didn't include this kind of community heritage section or something in the supplemental report.
Yeah, um, well, yeah, um, if not, we'll make sure it's in the next update, because we did a lot of work on that, and the arts and culture part of the plan that exists now, that was not in any of our previous master plans.
Remember, everybody wanted these?
Yeah.
Great, well, thank you for a productive meeting, and we will adjourn at eight fourteen, thank you.